Good evening and thank you for joining us. I'm Amy Osher, host of Behind the Headlines. We'd like to welcome our in-studio guests, our online viewers, the panelists, and of course, our candidates this evening. This forum is for the Collier County Commission District Two race. Now, each of the candidates were supplied a breakdown of our rules of conduct. We have them posted outside if you'd like to review them as well. It outlines, we'll begin with a two-minute opening statement from each one of the candidates. They'll get one minute to answer each one of the questions, and at the end they'll have a minute and a half to do a closing statement. We're keeping time and I'll intervene if someone goes long and asks them to wrap it up. I may also pause if we feel that a rebuttal is in order. All the questions, including ones submitted by the public, have been vetted for their suitability. Now, on to the rules this evening, we hope everyone will adhere to. No signs, t-shirts, or handout materials supporting any candidate or cause. Cell phones must be silenced, please. No pictures, videos, or videos may be taken during the forum. No speaking from the audience. No show of support for or against any participant, candidate, panelist, or moderator, to include clapping, cheering, whistling, or booing. Applause is appropriate at the conclusion of the program. Naples Daily News reserves the right to deny entry to any individual. Anyone not adhering to these rules may be asked to leave. Now, on to introducing our panelists. We have editorial editor Alan Barton with the Naples Daily News, Brent Batten, columnist with the Naples Daily News, and Chad Oliver, anchor with NBC Two. And we'd like to please welcome our candidates. We have James Calamari, James Carter in the middle, and Andy Solis. For the first two rounds, panelists will ask questions. We'll be following that up with questions that are solicited from our audience, and then we'll go back to the panel again. So, let's begin with our opening statements. Would you like to begin, Mr. Calamari?
Good evening. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Hopefully you didn't drown in the weather on the way in. My name is James Calamari and I'm running for Collier County Commission in District Two. I've been living in Collier County for 20 years. I have lived on the same street for all 20 of those years in District Two. I was educated with a bachelor's and master's degree in District Two. However, I can no longer say that because they redistricted, so now my college, which is Hodge's University, is outside of District Two. I'm a boots-on-the-ground guy. I have 30-plus years of government experience, the last eight of which are with Pelican Marsh CDD, which is a local special-purpose taxing district here in Collier, so I have current experience in budgeting and working in government in this county. As far as my background, I'm from the Fire Department. I was paramedic from New York. I have also been a deputy commander for the State Medical Response Team and for the Federal National Disaster Medical System. A lot of people spend their lives on the sidelines of history. I've actually been boots-on-the-ground. I was at Ground Zero. I was in Louisiana for Katrina. I was in Texas for Hurricane Ike, and I was right here serving for four months in Lee County for Hurricane Charlie, Francis Jean, Ivan, Larry, Curly, Mo, and all the rest of the ones. For those of you that live here know what I'm talking about. And also, we did a special response for the Haiti earthquake where we went over to Homestead Air Force Base. So, I didn't spend my time in an air-conditioned office watching history happen on TV. I was actually boots-on-the-ground. I'm an operations guy. I've got the educational background, I've got the experiential background, and I've got the years in government service to be able to do this job. And it's time for me to get in there and do that. I'm not a politician, don't plan to become a career politician. I'm an operations guy, and that's my goal, to do the best I can for the people of Collier County. Thank you again for coming out this evening.
Thank you very much. If you could pass that over to Mr. Carter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here. It's a pleasure to be hosted by the Naples Daily News. I'd like to clear a couple things up front. First of all, my name's Jim Carter. I'm not Eric Carter. He was here last night. He's running for the school board, and a lot of people think, "Are you related?" And the answer is no. We're two different people. I am the most senior person in this campaign, and as great Ronald Reagan once said, "I will never let my opponent's youth and inexperience get in the way in this campaign." They're good men, and I've enjoyed working with them over the last couple of months. We're losing three of our five experienced commissioners, and that's a big gap to fill. And I want to bring that leadership, experience, and knowledge back to the County Commission so that we can make that transition during this gap, as we try to do everything that we can do to move forward in all the items that are in front of us. I've lived here for 37 years. I've been 25 years in District Two, raised my children here. Jane Carter, my partner, and I ran Carter &amp; Carter Enterprises. I am an expert, if some say, in strategic planning, team development, and team leadership. I resigned from that position in 1998 to run for the Board of County Commissioners. I stepped down because I wanted no conflict of interest so that I could do the job. Now, while I was there, they gave me a nickname. They called me the Can Do Commissioner. And the reason for that is, under community character, I initiated the strongest ordinance in the state of Florida for sign control. You see no pole signs, you see no neon, you see no billboards. It was a part of keeping Collier beautiful. In the environment, I worked with the Pelican Bay community to reopen Clambay Pass, preserve that estuary, and stop the die-off of the mangroves. I worked developers up in the north part of the county by Wiggins Bay, where we preserved an enormous amount of acreage so that we could have that wetland in perpetuity. Started the first water conservation program. It was called Every Drop Counts.
We're going to have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to doing this tonight, and those are some of the things that I have done, and I will continue to work hard as your next County Commissioner from District Two.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Solis?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Thank you to the Naples Daily News for hosting us. My name is Andy Solis. I'm a native Floridian, actually. I was born in Lakeland, grew up in Gainesville. I moved to Naples in 1993 and raised my family in District Two in the Pine Ridge neighborhood. I've lived in District Two since 1994. I came here as an attorney. I've practiced law in private practice in Collier County since 1993. And what I think is very important is, in the last four or five years, really, I've been involved in the three issues that are most important to Collier County today: growth management, natural resources, and economic development. Those are the three issues that I see for the future that are what's going to be driving Collier County, and we need to handle those very, very carefully. I've served on the Planning Commission for the last year, and I resigned just recently to run for office, so I've been dealing with the growth issues as they are today. The growth issues we have today are different than they were, you know, in the '90s. That's very important. Also, with regard to natural resources, the Planning Commission also sits as the EAC, the Environmental Advisory Council. So, we reviewed the environmental issues that were coming forward related to the growth as it is today. But most importantly, I think, is, in order for the county to be sustainable in the future, we have to diversify the economy. And for the last three years, I've been on the, what's called, the Opportunity Naples Committee that has surveyed the county. A strategic plan was prepared, and we're now implementing that plan on how to diversify the economy. I'd like to see the county continue in the direction that it's going, and I've got the current experience to help do that. So, again, my name is Andy Solis. I'm running for District Two County Commission, and I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Now, we're going to turn it over. Alan, do you have, would you like to get us started?
Yes, also, thank you to everybody for turning out and joining us tonight. We appreciate your interest in this very much. I want to preface this first question with a little bit of explanation, and that is, in this particular race, this is a district race for Collier County Commission, so it's people in District Two who will vote for this. We have these three gentlemen on the ballot, and so, on August 30th, the decision will be made, and one of these three gentlemen will be put into the seat. So, with that background, here's my question. We have seen Collier County grow. We have a budget with everything included that's approaching a billion dollars. We have thousands of county employees. Would you support a system like the school boards or the Lee County Commission where the district commissioner must reside in the district but is elected by everyone countywide?
I think that's always up to the voter. I've had that question asked before and a number of occasions, and people have different opinions about this. They'd like it countywide, some want it in the district, because they feel if you reside in a district, you represent the interests of that district. You deal with their issues. You're closer to them than if you have to run countywide. So, I think it's a mixed question. Would I support it? I would support the initiative for the discussion, to put it on the ballot, so everybody would have an opportunity to voice an opinion about it, but I will not answer that question yes or no. I think it's up to you, the voters, to come back to us and say, "This is what we want." And if that be the case, and I was running, I would follow the rules.
I agree. I think that's a question that should be put to the voters. Each district has its own characteristics. The issues in District Two, I think, are very different than the issues in District Five. So, I think there is some merit to having a district commissioner that represents a set constituency. I think there is some valid reasons to have it that way. But if we were to make that change, I would agree. It would have to be put to the voters, and the voters in Collier County would have to make that decision.
Yes, thank you, candidates, for coming out tonight. My question, are impact fees in Collier County too high, too low, or outright? And if you favor lowering impact fees, how do you propose to make up the difference in funding needed to keep up with infrastructure? Mr. Carter, can we start with you this time and work our way down and then back?
Okay. If I can quickly summarize that question. You're asking me if impact fees are too high or too low? And if we did decide to lower them, how would we make up the budgetary difference? All right. Thank you, sir. Now, I hope my time starts now, not then. All right. I approach impact fees exactly on this manner. Impact fees need to be spread according to the size of the building being put up. An 1,800-foot-square home should never be paying the impact fees as a 6,000-square-foot home. If there is differences, how will we make it up? It seems to me that we have to have a balanced program in order to do that. So, if you do a spread and you charge a guy of 6,000 square feet more than the guy that has 1,800 square feet, then I think that you'll have a balanced budget. But I truly believe that impact fees are an issue that has to be thoroughly revisited in terms of what our expectations are and what we're going to do as it affects a wide variety of projects in Collier County.
And now, we want to go to... Which way did you say we're in? Down the line to Mr. Solis?
The impact fees structure as we have it today is certainly, in my opinion, as high as it should go. But I think the bigger issue is whether or not the impact fee is actually working and whether it's fair. I think we need to revisit how the impact fees are assessed. Impact fees in one part of the county being the same as in another part of the county in many instances don't make a lot of sense. An impact fee on a home in, for example, District Two being the same essentially as an impact fees for a home in eastern Collier County or Mocley seems to be unfair in some respects. So, I think one of the things that I would propose if I'm elected is that we need to revisit the impact fee structure. Whether we come up with a sliding scale of some kind or a different process for assessing them, I think that is one of the priorities that we should have as a county, is to look at that issue.
Mr. Calamari?
I agree. We need to look at the impact fee structure, but it needs to be commensurate with the actual impact that's being created. An example that was just used was impact fees in District Two versus impact fees in District Five. The infrastructure that those impact fees are supposed to be helping cost offset are not going to be the same because the infrastructure already exists in District Two, where in some areas of District Five, the infrastructure doesn't exist, and there is going to be more significant impact in those areas. So, we need to look at the bigger picture of what those fees are doing. Are they being used properly? And how can we figure, moving forward, to make those more cost-effective where we're not going to lose money, but we're also not going to hurt developers as well?
Okay, great. And we'll have Chad Oliver. We'll conclude this round of questions.
Well, let's stay in the same vein of housing, and Mr. Andy Solis, you can take this first stab at this one. You mentioned three main issues that you see are growth management, natural resources, and economic development. So, when we talk about economic development, we need a workforce to fill these jobs. Do you see a role in the Board of County Commissioners in providing or spurring more modest, affordable housing for workers who want to live and work in Collier?
Absolutely. The Opportunity Naples study that was created and the strategic plan that was created that we're implementing now identified affordable housing as one of the main hurdles to diversifying the economy. We have to have the workers living in Collier County if we're going to do that, and not having that affordable housing. And affordable housing in the sense of housing for young professionals, teachers, our policemen, our firemen, that kind of affordable housing is really what we're talking about, not some definition of, you know, low-income housing. We need all of it. So, the County Commission can play a very important role in that. And one of the things that I would propose on the County Commission is that we revisit how we encourage the development of affordable housing. We need to make it, we need to provide some incentive, incentive in the sense of higher densities, for landowners and developers to provide that. If it makes more sense to them financially, it'll happen.
You know, I've been involved in economic development here since 1985, and every study has brought up the same issue and raised the same question. And now, finally, the Board of County Commissioners commissioned another study, and I hope it's the last study, and if I'm there, it will be the last study, that they're going to bring forth to the community a total picture from all different parties of what their recommendations are to the Board of County Commissioners to deal with this very, very broad-based issue. There's no simple solutions to it. You've got parts to it. You've got public housing. You have Habitat for Humanity. And then you have the opportunity, through changing densities in a number of areas, where you can create, through the free market, affordable workforce housing. And it's going to take a combination of all that review. It's going to take the opportunity to hear what the community is telling us one more time, what they think has to be done. And I think we've kicked that can down the road as far as we ever can, make the decisions based on the studies coming back and the wide base of input from the community.
And I believe you get the last word again.
We spend a lot of time in all of these forums talking about workforce housing and affordable housing, and we always seem to leave out seniors. Seniors also need affordable housing. I think Andy talked about young professionals need affordable housing. And yes, even our blue-collar workers need affordable housing. There's no one cookie cutter piece that we can put onto this and say, "Well, this is going to work for this," and it's going to work for everything. It's not going to work for everything. We have to look at diversification in our housing and make sure that that diversification is intelligent by partnering with our developers and say, "Hey, look, we want to be able to make sure that our seniors that are downsizing and have fixed incomes have a place to live, but we also want to make sure that we can get professionals, doctors, lawyers, to move into our communities." And it's going to take incentives from the County Commission. It's going to take partnering with those developers to make sure that we can get that done. And I think the responsibility of the County Commission is to make sure that we do have those partnerships. We've done enough studies. The time for studies is over. The time for action is now.
We're going to pause for just a second, remind folks that we have some pens and questionnaire on the seat. If anybody would like to submit a question, we do have a section here that we'd like to hear some of your thoughts as well. Now, for our next round. Alan, do you have something?
Yeah, for the next question, we're going to do a little microphone challenge here and start with James. Pass it down to Andy and then back to Jim. And here's the question. Start down here with James and then down to Andy. So, the question is, is there enough beach parking in District Two? If not, where should it go and how should it be paid for?
No, there's not enough beach parking in District Two. There are a couple of plans that are on the burners right now to utilize some of the empty spaces within District Two. I do know that one of the plans is looking at the water park and shuttling people down from the water park down to the beach. I think that's a great idea because the county already owns the property. The parking lot already exists, so it's just a question of getting them from point A to point B. But unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of empty real estate left in District Two to put up more parking lots, to put up more areas for people to park. So, I think the solution might be, how do we shuttle them in? What can we look at outside of District Two where we can use the CAT system to bring people to the beach in District Two?
Thank you very much, Mr. Carter.
Andy goes next.
Okay. Well, there's clearly not enough parking, in my opinion, for District Two for beach parking. The question is, where would we put it? I think the county would have to look at investing in purchasing land to do that, to make it somewhere adjacent to the beach, and I think that is an investment that we would have to look very long and hard at. Some alternatives for transportation, I think, would be maybe an acceptable alternative, but that is a very difficult issue. I think the state has some involvement in beach access as well, so that is certainly something that needs to be looked into. I don't have the answer today as to where exactly to put it, and I'm sure there's a property owner out there that's probably happy, but I think it's something that we need to look at as a county, because as the county grows, especially District Two, has the beach, and that is one of the impacts of growth in eastern Collier County that's going to have an effect on District Two.
Okay. It's an age-old question, and is there enough in District Two? No. Is there enough in District One? No. Is there enough in District Four? No. We have very limited spaces to accommodate all the people who want to go to the beach. Is there some magic bullet out there that's going to answer that question? I don't know if there is. I think there's several ideas that have been shared. I think the Commission is going to have to look at, what are the best alternatives we have? Can we acquire some property somewhere that could be converted into two or three stories of parking? And what community wants that? You know, there is no simple solution to that. But what we need to do, as always, is continue to look to find out what a possible alternative might be to help the situation. After we get out of season, it's really not a problem. So, it's a seasonal thing, and the difficulty is that you don't have parking, you don't have roads, you don't have a lot of things just to handle season.
Thank you very much. Brent, would you like to add a question?
Sure. Speaking of the beach, with growth creating a demand for housing close to the beach, we may see more requests for high-rise developments on the outskirts of Naples, similar to the one recently approved in the Gateway Triangle. How would you balance property rights with the need to maintain the character of the existing neighborhoods? Mr. Calamari, the microphone's closest to you. You want to take it and work right now?
So, it sounds to me like you're asking, "Do we want to knock down something small and put up something big?" Is that kind of where you're headed?
There was something small there. Now, there's something big.
Right, and that's the direction we're heading in. Naples and Collier County is a beautiful town, and I think if we start, you know, taking things down and putting up these tall buildings in a very short amount of time, it's going to look like Miami. And when it starts to look like Miami, comes all the other problems that occur in Miami, and I just don't think that's a good idea. There is plenty of real estate, there's plenty of land, and there's plenty of building opportunities outside of District Two, off the waterfront, that we can look at building vertically and look at building multi-unit dwellings where that would be better utilized for highest and best use than it would be to start blocking our view of the Gulf and start turning this into a sprawling metropolis like Miami. I don't see the need for that. I think we need to look east, you know, for better opportunities to do that.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
It's a very challenging question, and here's the problem, as I see any time that you start doing this. When you start making an exception in one area that you're going to raise a building height, or you're going to do this, you're going to do that, what happens is begins to set a precedent, and pretty soon, you have lost your community character because you're acting on each one of these things individually versus going back to a strategic plan that says, "Wait a minute. This is what we can do. This is what will work for us. We don't want to East Coast to West Coast, and if we don't be careful, we're going to find that when you start making exceptions, you're going to run into an enormous amount of difficulty in trying to balance property rights against what the character should be of the community." I have no specific answers to it, but I won't look at this stuff situationally. I always look at, what is the overall impact? What direction is it going to take us? And is this what we want Collier County to look like?
Thank you. Mr. Solis?
It is a difficult question, the balancing of property rights and the needs and the interests of the community surrounding the properties where this would be proposed. Number one, I think what's important is transparency. We have a public hearing process for rezones like that, and we need to make sure that that process and the input that's being given from staff and from the public and from the landowners is transparent, number one. Number two, for District Two, I think we have to look very critically at whether or not we want to continue allowing those kinds of high-rise developments because of the infrastructure. Vanderbilt Drive is still a two-lane road. I think it was a two-lane road when I moved to town. Wiggins Pass Road is a two-lane road, and it's the same road, I think, that was there when I moved to town in the '90s. So, I think the issue really is looking at the Land Development Code and treating it as a process much like a court proceeding. They have to meet the standard for rezone, and we have to treat it that way.
And Chad?
Show of hands, how many people in the room tonight live in District Two? Okay, here you go. Here's a District Two-centric question that's in the news this week. Let's begin with Mr. Jim Carter. You mentioned earlier, Mr. Carter, about a study regarding affordable housing. Well, earlier this summer, Collier County Commissioners hired a group to do a sports tourism study, and the company told commissioners, "The demand for sports tourism is here, but the facilities are not." Would you, if elected again to the Board of County Commissioners, be in favor of expanding North Collier Regional Park to add more sports fields?
I think North Collier Regional Park is not the best option to expand sports activities, and the reason I say that is, you've got a number of environmentally sensitive lands out there. I think there are other options to this. So, do we need more sports facilities? Yes. Do we have other opportunities where we can do that? Yes. Should we take a piece of land and develop a multiple sports complex? Yes. I would do that. I would support that, and I would look for that. I would do that versus ever approving or even thinking about bringing a single-source professional baseball team here that'll leave us in a situation where we're indebted and where we don't achieve what we're looking for. These facilities, whatever they are, must be available to all the residents of, not only of District Two, but Collier County. So, again, I will support, but not at that location. There are others that have been identified, and I think will work out a lot better.
Mr. Solis?
Thank you very much.
This particular issue relates to softball fields and some soccer fields, as I understand it, and I've actually looked at the four options that were proposed, and I wouldn't be in favor of the three, the first three options, because it pushed all of the fields and everything into what is now a preserve and up against the Willshire Lakes neighborhood and some other residential areas that have been there way before these plans were brought forward. Now, there's some, the fourth plan had a plan to essentially redo some of the footprint of the park already. Now, the fourth plan had a plan to essentially redo some of the footprint of the park already, which I think may have some merit. But as far as expanding the ball fields in that area, I wouldn't be in favor of that. I do think there are some other lands that are available that would be perfect for that kind of a development. And certainly, if the revenue would be there for the county, and it makes sense as an investment, then it should be considered. But I wouldn't agree with the three proposals that were set forward.
Alan, do you have some questions from the audience?
Calamari.
I'm sorry. Of course we give you some.
Exactly. Yeah, really. So I'm inclined to agree. We're built out. District 2 is built out. You know, everybody wants to put this in District 2 and put that in District 2 and put this in District 2. What's wrong with all that vacant land that's not in District 2? I agree, recreation's very important. I agree, we want to have soccer fields and softball fields. I agree with all that, but we've already developed all this land that's here in this district. I don't understand why we want to overdevelop this land, why we want to overuse this land, why we want to start damaging some of our preserve areas. We need to stay away from that. We can go east again to put up these type of sporting fields. I would be in favor of sporting fields, but instead of specifically saying, let's put up a soccer field, let's put up a football field, let's put up a baseball field, why not let's put up a multipurpose field that can serve all of those purposes, you know, and just if we have a decent Parks and Recreation Department, they know how to re-line or restructure or reuse each of those fields as necessary. But let's look to outside of District 2 for that. Thank you.
We gave you extra two seconds. Alan?
We also solicited questions from readers and also through social media. So this is a question about an area that's not overdeveloped. What would you do to capitalize on the artificial reefs to bring more visitors and business opportunities to our community? Let's go ahead and start with Andy on this one. What would you do to capitalize on the artificial reefs to bring more visitors and business opportunities to our community?
Well, I think there's, one, if it's environmentally a good idea, I think we should create more. Certainly, using that as a basis to bring in ecotourism would, I think, would be a good idea. It's one of our great assets, is we have this wonderful beach area. I don't know that the county is marketing that as one of the attractions that would bring people to Collier County, but I certainly think that would be something that we should consider. The creation of more reefs and better areas for fishing would also be something I would be in favor of.
Thank you very much.
How many in the room are familiar with the Paradise Reef Project? Saw it on PBS? This is absolutely a phenomenal project. And will it bring more tourism to Collier County? I believe so. Who's responsible for that in Collier County Government and making that happen? We have a tourist development council. We have a whole department that's dedicated to that. So I believe, yes, this will help our tourism, and it'll bring different people here who want to fish and dive and have the opportunity to really enjoy something we didn't have before. And you know the good news about this? This was done as a private effort. It was a public-private effort. The government stayed out of it. The private enterprises built it. Government was there to get the permits and to check and make sure it was done correctly, but we didn't fund it. And that is the good news, and that's why I think it's such a positive project, and we ought to continue to do these things in the future.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Calamari.
It's very hard to follow you two. I don't like going last. I agree. I agree with everything that's been said here. Only positive can come out of that. I'm a diver. I like to dive. And yeah, it'd be great to be able to have more reefs that have more, you know, species that are starting to hang out in those reefs and to go dive and see those things. And yes, I think that this might become a great dive destination vacation. You know, people that want to, oh, let's go to Naples. It's great. Oh, they have the diving there is great. I've never heard anybody say that. But wouldn't it be great if they did? Think of what that would do to our tourism. Think of the money that would be spent in here, in our hotels, in our restaurants, in our retail outlets. Yes, I think it's a great idea, and I think that we should encourage programs like this. And the fact that that was funded privately, that's even better. No money out of our tax dollars. So yes, I'm all for it.
Very good. Brent?
Mr. Calamari, you go first this time, all right. From the audience, an audience member asked, what would you do to help small business owners and reduce the cost of doing business in Collier County?
This question's come up at several forums, and it's a fantastic question. We need to nurture our business owners here in Collier County. It's very disheartening to see, you know, a new business open up, and you're all excited, oh, this great new business. Then you do business there, and then he doesn't make it. Two years down the road, suddenly the doors are closed, and you're like, wow, I used to like that place. And I wonder, what could we have done? What could we, the people, have done? There needs to be some sort of incentive programs or something that we, as county government, can do to make sure that we have vibrant, vital businesses here in Collier County that are able to sustain their business, that are able to maintain their business and not take their business elsewhere. I know that a few of them have moved out of the county. You know, they're still in business, but they left Collier County. So maybe we need to look at tax breaks. Maybe we need to look at some sort of partnership where we ask them, what do you want? What can we do for you? And I think that's probably where the answer might lie. Let those businesses come to us with some ideas, and we can entertain that.
You know, it's always a struggle for a small business to get started, to be able to do what they intended to do. And many times, it's government that gets in the way. Our permitting process is complicated. Our regulatory process is complicated. The inspection process may take forever to get it done. We have to revisit and revitalize and change a lot of the ways that we do this. When we talk about offering incentives to someone, we should offer the same incentives to a business that is already here versus the same one we bring in from the outside. So county government could do a lot more to ensure that these small businesses could survive if we cleaned up our own act. The second thing, probably one of the best-kept secrets in this community, is the incubator where you generate new ideas, and then we have the great Naples Accelerator that has been designed so that companies can come and they can work, and they have a place to go, and they can get guidance and development. It's fee-based, but it's a 501(c)(3).
Time.
And they've been an enormous help to this county.
Mr. Solis?
The question related to existing businesses?
The question is phrased from the audience. What would you do to help small business owners and reduce the cost of doing business in Collier County?
Right. Okay. First off, we need to protect and support our existing businesses, in addition to trying to attract businesses to diversify the economy. For small businesses especially, time is money. And if a business wants to expand, we need to come up with a streamlined process for an existing business that's already here to go through the permitting process. And whether that involves including the Office of Business and Economic Development as part of the Community Development Services to expedite that kind of a process, we have to streamline the process. I think a lot has been done so far, but I think there's a lot that can be done to improve that. One of the issues I know that's come up over the years is the issue where there's a county fire official, and then there's the inspections by the fire chiefs themselves in each fire district. And many times, someone that's trying to open a business and is building out a business space gets caught in a loop there, which becomes very, very time-consuming. We need to shrink that time.
And Chad, do you have a question from our audience?
Okay, and I know we're running short on time, so we ask that you keep your answers on the one-minute spot. Mr. Carter, can you pass the mic to Mr. Calamari? We're going to give him back-to-back first stabs at this one. And I want to start with Mr. Calamari because of your background in this area. A member of the audience wants to know, what is your position on further merging fire and EMS? And if merged, who is best to oversee it?
Yes, I would support merging the fire departments in Collier County. This has been done in other places. New York City comes right to the top of the list because that's where I used to work. And the fire department took over EMS. It cut costs. It saved tax dollars. And the system has been working ever since they did it back in 1998 or something like that. I don't think the Collier County Commission, we have enough on our plate, you know, the commission's going to have enough on its plate. I think a standalone fire commission, which is what we have now, should continue to run the fire department and continue to do the job that they've been doing so well. There's no reason to mess with that system. However, by merging the two departments and decreasing some of the infrastructure of both of those departments on the manpower level, would only save taxpayer dollars and make for a more streamlined, more efficient system.
Thank you. And to Mr. Carter?
This will be a subject of discussion a lot during this commission race. It will be discussed a great deal in the next couple of years. First of all, we're in a consolidation process of the fire departments. I think we've got to digest what we've already done. EMS and the fire departments are working well together. They finally worked out some of their differences. And to what point do we merge the two, we don't even have an idea yet what that structure would look like. The key here is always, the person that is injured or needs assistance doesn't care whether a fire truck arrives or whether an EMS vehicle arrives. All they want is service. We've got to keep our eye on that. I don't think it's up to the Board of County Commissioners at this point to try to take on another initiative beyond what we're already doing, is that we are working with the fire districts, encouraging them to absorb this consolidation. And we're taking a hard look at EMS to make sure that that supports and works well with the other units.
Time. Mr. Solis?
My view on this is really that we need to look at, what's the most efficient way of providing these essential services? And what is the best way to provide the highest level of service that we can provide? And I think this is something that the county commission needs to continually review. I know the issue of whether the fire districts or the county provides EMS service has been a subject of debate, and that is something that needs to be reviewed on an ongoing basis. I think we need to review it in the next year and see, what can we do to provide the highest level of service, and what is the most efficient way of doing that? And whatever that decision is, then that's how I would view it. I would be in favor of that.
Okay, now hang on to that mic. We're going to have you start us off with the closing statements. You have a minute and a half.
Well, thank you for being here. This is, I think, our last forum, and it's wonderful to be able to talk about the issues as they stand today with everyone. The issues, again, today are different than they were in the 90s. And I think that we need to have county commissioners, number one, that are involved in those issues today. Growth management issues were different 20 years ago. The pressures on our natural resources today are much different. 20 years ago, we didn't know what fracking was. We'd never even heard of it. And economic development was something that really, we didn't even have an Office of Economic Development in Collier County until a few years ago. So they're not new issues, but they're different in how they impact the county. We need a county commissioner in District 2 that understands that, that's been involved in those issues, in real time. I also think that, and this has been brought up several times, that being a county commissioner should be your job and the only job that you have. And I disagree with that, because county commissioners need to be connected to the community. They should have businesses. They should have employees. It's what keeps them connected with the community, with the economic environment of the county. I'd love to be your county commissioner for District 2. Please vote. Early voting starts on the 20th. I'm Andy Solis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carter?
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I believe the county commissioner's job is full-time. That's what you pay for. That's what you should get. Being connected with the community, I've been connected with this community ever since I've been here, whether as a county commissioner or whether in the civic associations that I'm a part of, the HOA, or the Pelican Marsh Foundation. The Men's Republican Club has speakers from all over this county. Come every month to talk about the issues that we're facing in the county. My job as a county commissioner is full-time, and I'll tell you why I think that's full-time. Because if we don't pay attention to the critical issues that are in front of us, we've got two choices here. We're either going to make those decisions and move forward, or we're going to slip backward. And if we slip backward, we're going to end up damaging our quality of life. I want you to vote Jim Carter on August 30th, whether it's in the early voting, whether it's still absentee, or whether it's the day of the election. Thank you. I look forward to serving you again.
Thank you. Mr. Calamari, we'd like to hear your thoughts.
I've got a website. You've heard me talk. I see all the same faces here that I've seen at all the forums. You know what I stand for. You know what I think. It's time to move forward. I'm not a politician. I don't plan on becoming a politician. I'm a Reaganite. That's who I am. That's what I am. I think it's time to get people into county government that are going to be held accountable, that are going to be transparent. I'm pretty transparent. You know, there's no secrets me. I don't do politically correct. I don't have a filter. I don't have the time. Okay? And I don't think our commissioners should be playing politics or, you know, serving special interest groups or having pet projects or having an agenda. I don't have an agenda. Well, you know what? I have to take that back. I have one agenda, and that's to do the best job that I can do for the people of Collier County, to do what the people want. Not what I want, not what I think is best, but what the people think is best. What's your, you know, I'm your commissioner. Yes, I'm coming from District 2, but I'm your commissioner. I represent the entire county. If you think that's what you want in county government, I'm the guy to vote for. If that's not what you want, you have two other choices. August 30th is coming up pretty quick. I do ask that you get out there and vote regardless of who it's for. You need to be heard. Thank you.
Well, thank you to all the candidates. And that concludes this forum. We have two more this evening, but we'd like to applaud for all the District 2 candidates.